Across the movie. Uh. Movie theater. I have one. Then. All right.
Okay, so you're a little bit of an east.
I'm a ten east.
Okay, great.
Uh. Yeah, George is a little bit. Say. You should buy it. And five years later. Have you, have you?
I, I, me and his brother, they. The best friends are great. And so I'm really good friends with the kids. Uh. We, we hang out at his place like a man. And our place, one, whatever, we played on the ice. He plays over at my house and. Uh, yeah. Good times. Yeah, I've known Jordan before.
Yeah. He's thirty. Thirty is just five years. Like. Like, no, you're sad. It's just. Or.
My daughter, my youngest daughter texted me. So is it gonna be a long meeting? Called her back, really, okay, Pete. Um. Text called her back real quick. I'm well, we've got two items, so we've got three. So seven, there's seven things. So always makes it soon, and I got help quick to help on this.
Or we did any, uh, good.
I think the only one we're missing is Jace, right?
It's, they can't. Can't.
I may need to borrow your pen. My, uh.
Yeah.
Just said, put it right there.
Yeah.
You coming up here?
Yeah.
I don't, I can't look into that pressure.
Pressure schmasher, get up here. You're more important than we are.
I don't know, I think there's a lot more pressure around that little round table this year.
Oh, yeah. I would never want that. That sounds awful. Well, now I have to. And Noah?
Yeah.
I know.
Guess we only have the one right now. I thought we were. They were moving down. Mm hmm.
This is our problems.
Good.
Boy, it was awesome. It was very. Uh, I, uh.
Ready to go, Noah? Royce? All right. Go ahead and get started. We'll bring to order the Syracuse City Planning Commission meeting September second, twenty twenty five. Uh, we will have an invocation or thought by Commissioner Anderson and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Baker. No, she, oh, yes, Baker, sorry. Sorry, Blake.
You got it.
Your grace, heavenly father, grateful to be able to meet together and to be able to, uh, be here for our city and to be able to discuss the needs and of our city and, uh, help, uh, move things forward and I just please bless them and be able to have a thoughtful meeting and, uh, say things in which Christ amen.
Amen.
Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We will, uh, have an adoption of uh, today's meeting agenda, which has been posted in accordance with state law. Take a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move on to the meeting minutes. And we will be, uh, adopting the, uh, regular meeting and work session for the meeting on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five. If there are no notes or updates that need to be done on the meeting minutes, we'll take a motion to adopt.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt the meeting minutes for the regular meeting and work session for August nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
We have a motion and a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And all abstain, was not present.
Fair enough. Okay. Next item, we have public comment section. This is an opportunity for members of the city to address the planning commission regarding items not scheduled for public hearing on this agenda. If you are here to discuss an item on the agenda, we ask that you wait for that time. Otherwise, uh, please keep your time to three minutes or less. Anybody online? Cool. Go ahead and close public comment. All right, our number fourth item is public hearing for revised site plan for commercial sites. Royce?
Okay, so we, uh, let me discuss this one a little bit last time in the upcoming, uh, agenda items, but this is a, it's a revised site plan for, uh, one that was approved a few months ago. Um, we met in August with the A R C and there was one recommendation, there's, uh, but it's kind of dependent on whether these landings are going to end up actually being built or not, so. Uh, there was just, uh, a question about getting around the exterior of the building for anything that needed to be taken from back of house out to the front of the building. Um, so the, uh, so I'll go down to the site plan, can I give you an idea of what they were talking about? All right, so, yeah, I guess that probably shows it well enough. So this is the building outline here. So there's, there's a potential that there's going to be some concrete out here, but also depending on the way that it's set up, they might not have it. So it is shown here on the updated plan with a, uh, side kind of connection there, so. This, uh, this was something that was recommended by the, the A R C, it's not required by code, they are required by fire code. If they have fire risers in the back and also if they have doorways that they have some sort of walkway back there, but. Um, but other than that, uh, and again, not a code thing, but other than that, uh, the review of this, um, every, all the comments have been addressed. And so I'm just gonna let our engineer in. Um, all the comments have been addressed. The, uh, the, the only real differences here are that the previous site plan showed a drive through coming down along the back and then, uh, along the south side of the building. And since that's been removed, they just have increased landscaping and the building is, is a little bit bigger than it was before. So, um, let's see, let me go down to landscape here. So the landscaping that's proposed is, uh, pretty much the same as what was there before, uh, mixture of trees and shrubs and then like a gravel base, um. So water wise landscaping. And, uh, they still have maintained, uh, previous, uh, recommendations that were, uh, applied by the planning commission, uh, namely that the access here on the south side. And I've been working with the applicant on the property to the east and they're, they're amenable to that as well, we just haven't received an updated plan that shows that change. So, uh, the difference in this case being that with the previous drive through, uh, that was one of the main concerns was just making sure that the drive through had two lines of, of, uh, access to exit the, the property, so. This would essentially just allow for cross access. Uh, if people wanted to access a, uh, drive through on the other building, so kind of thinking ahead and where we do have the application in, in line. Uh, this, this is still going to be effective for that. It allows people to be able to access that drive through across this property and across the other one, in case there are conflicts over here that would prevent access, so. Um, less traffic jams is good, I guess, so. Uh, but again, we, uh, all the staff comments have been addressed, all the city code, uh, uh, meets all the requirements of the city codes, we would recommend approval. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. All right, this item is open for public hearing. Uh, for this, we will go ahead and open public hearing again. As a public comment, if you have any comments, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and play, close public hearing.
Yeah. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Note that for the minutes, uh, for meeting. All right, uh, open it up to your discussion or motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, where, did you? You're looking at me, did you ask?
No, no.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was talking with Noah.
Down the line. And then you made eye contact. I don't have any concerns, Chair. Okay.
And I noticed that some of them have, uh, wall lighting sconces on some of the depictions, but it doesn't look like there's any that are in the um, profile view specifically, and then the lighting analysis doesn't have any coming off of the building, they only have the parking lot, is there, will there be lighting involved there, has that been checked?
Oh, yeah.
Parking lot.
So the lighting in this one's a little different, uh, so that you can see these, these marks here. Um, the, the lighting actually is located in the awning facing downward, so it's gonna be a full cutoff light, but it's just in the actual metal of the awning extending from the building.
Perfect, yeah, I just didn't want them to be shining like they have in the, in the one depiction, they're shining up and down, so.
And Royce, do we need to go back to our newest ordinance of bicycles for this, or?
Uh, they actually show the bike parking on here, so it's located down there. So that, that's a holdover from the previous one. Yep.
Perfect. That was gonna be my comment as well, so. All right. If nothing else, we'll take a motion.
I can make a motion, uh, I move the planning commission approve the request of federal dwell in for admitted site plan on lot three A of Atlanta Antelope Station subdivision located at sixteen oh four south, three thousand west, containing zero point five eight acres in the G Z, G C zone.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, wait a second. Commissioner Garner, we have a motion, uh, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is adopted. Next item, discussion and motion, this is not a public hearing for final plat in R C's Park West Phase Three.
I apologize, my reviews are just massive because I've got all this copied and pasted code, but there we go. Okay, so this is gonna be the third and, and final, uh, plat for the R C's Park West project started a few years ago, uh, replacing the R C Willie property. Um, so this, this is gonna be on the north side of the road, north side of twenty seven hundred where the old parking lot was, and, uh, there's also some properties to the west of the parking lot that are included. So, uh, a mixture of townhomes and single family housing for this one. So this is twenty seven hundred down here, and then there's private drives that come up for the townhomes, um, and then we've got two single family properties that will access the public drive up here. Um, so, yeah, this one's pretty straightforward, all the staff comments have been addressed, meets all the requirements of the city code. Um, so we'd recommend approval.
Awesome. Um, quick question, so to, to clarify, those two single families will be kind of adopted into the existing uh, north facing area and they won't have access to that private.
Yeah, so it kind of backs this private drive, but yeah, and I suppose potentially they could access it, I guess, it's a weird sort of pseudo double frontage lot, but um, there is a yeah, so we've got a little bit of a landscape buffer on the south side, so this, this property on the west side doesn't have access onto it, but um, I guess it's really up to the property owner if they wanted to access a garage or something back there. And it is a private drive, so we don't have like a double frontage lot standard for something like that in the code.
Okay. All right. Um, discussion or motion?
Chair, there was a question the engineer brought up about a width of roadway or access road, has that been resolved? There's only six inches difference, but I'm just curious.
For the access road up here, this section?
I.
Page one. Twenty five.
Let me grab that.
It's just as wide as.
Oh, five hundreds.
Five eighty of road being dedicated on twenty seven south street. And not thirty three.
Okay, and is that, is that in our engineer review? Okay, uh, we do have our engineer online, uh, Brian, can you speak to that?
Yeah, I sure can, um. I have not seen an updated set of plans since I did this review, um. So I'm not sure if it has been, but I know they were working on plans last week, um, but if you just approved it with a conditional approval, I'd be fine with that, with these comments being addressed.
So Brian, were all of your other questions addressed, your?
No, no, all those comments are still outstanding as far as I know, I haven't, like I said, I haven't seen a new set of plans yet for this one. But I don't, I don't think any of them are major enough to, to hold it up.
So I think if what you said is we can approve this just based on, um, repending approval of your comments.
Correct, yeah, if you just did a conditional approval with with these comments, I'd be fine with that.
So whatever motion, let's make sure we get that included in that as well. All right, take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission approve the request of John Nelson for a final plat called R C Park West's Phase Three on property located at sixteen ninety three west, twenty seven hundred south, containing one point six five four acres in the P R D zone. Including the additional uh, pending requests made by the city engineer.
So conditional upon that.
Conditional upon the approval of, uh, engineer.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
So a second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Next item is to adjourn to work session, take a motion?
Most agree.
Okay, we, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned to work session. All right, uh, we will start as usual with our city council liaison. What? Diculous, no kidding, all right, um. City attorney.
Welcome to part one of our ten minute trainings.
Oh.
As promised or as threatened, here we go.
Yeah.
I thought we'd spend tonight talking about, uh, for about ten minutes, the difference between land use decisions and land use regulations, those are two very different things in the Utah code. There are dozens of Supreme Court opinions that fight and change as to what that means. The legislature changes the actual definition in the statute every couple of years, and so it's a moving target. But I'm gonna give you the, the really basic rule that will make you be right most of the time. And here it is. If the action item is adopted or enacted by an ordinance by the city council, it is almost always a land use regulation. If the final decision is reached by the planning commission or planning staff, it is almost always a land use decision. Now, that doesn't always hold true, works for most of the time. So we've got ten true or false questions. Feel free to keep track if you want, I won't have you raise your hands, I won't have you report your scores. But let's talk about each of these ten questions and briefly what the answers are. Number one. A general plan is a land use decision. True or false? Ask yourself, who adopts the general plan? Is it the planning commission or the city council? If you answered false, you are correct. It is not a land use decision, it is a land use regulation because it's adopted by the city council upon recommendation of the planning commission. Let me digress for just a minute, what are the two things you did tonight? Decisions or regulations?
Decisions.
Decisions.
Decisions because?
We made the decision.
You made the final enact, you made the final adoption or the final enactment, okay. Question number two. Number two, that's not the answer, by the way. It may or may not be. Question number two. The adoption or amendment of a zoning map is a land use decision. True or false? Who changes the zoning map, you or the city council? City council on your recommendation, so if the city council does it, it's generally a regulation, correct? So that answer would have been false, the adoption of an amendment? Adoption or amendment of a zoning map is a land use regulation, number three. True or false, a general plan is a binding guide for land use regulations and land use decisions? True or false, is it binding or is it not binding?
Say that again, read it again.
A general plan is a binding guide for land use regulations and land use decisions. It's a general plan, it is not binding, it is advisory. Okay? The city council can do things in contravention of the general plan if they have a good reason. Uh, next question, number four, a zone change is a land use decision? True or false? Who makes the decision?
City council.
City council, if the city council does it, it's generally a land use?
Regulation.
Regulation. Next one. True or false? The determination of permitted and conditional uses in a specified zone is a land use regulation, true or false? True. That comes up through the planning commission on recommendation to the city council and the city council adopts the ordinance that sets what the permitted uses and the conditional uses are. Next one.
Yeah, the wording on that made it sound like we were making a decision on the.
I'm a lawyer, that's my job.
Did you notice that when he, when he started this whole thing, he said almost always, so he wasn't binding himself into a corner?
Yeah, the last question was, the last question is which member of the planning commission is gonna complain the most about the questions? Okay, next one. The city council can adopt a land use regulation that has not been vetted by the planning commission. True or false? Generally, the answer would be false, right, it comes through the planning commission, you hold a public hearing, you make a recommendation for or against, either way, that recommendation, recommendation goes to the city council and they make the ultimate decision. Generally, that's how it works. Okay? We'll get back to the exception to the rule. Next one, true or false, the city council may consider the planning commission's failure to make a recommendation as a negative recommendation. You get an application, you hold a public hearing, you table it, nothing happens, you never come back to it. Does the city council have to wait for you, or can they act and say, you didn't give them a recommendation, therefore we're going to treat that as a negative recommendation? They can do that. Which is why you always end up making a recommendation to the city council and never just throw it up to them without a recommendation. Okay, next one. The city council can decline to address a recommendation from the planning commission. Now you've held your public hearing, you've made your recommendation in favor of the zone change, you send it up to them, they're not sure what they want to do, so they're the ones that table it and table it and table it, can they do that forever, or do they eventually have to make a decision? They have to make a decision and they have to make it timely, although reasonably timely is that great debate in the courts. Oh, let's see, I think we're down to about number eight or nine here.
Yep.
The planning commission may amend the boundaries of a zoning district. True or false, you can amend the boundary of a zoning district. Nope, you can only make a recommendation to the city council, that is a land use regulation which is adopted by ordinance. Number ten. The city council may enact a temporary land use regulation without a recommendation from the planning commission. True, they can, this is an exception to the general rule that they have to have your recommendation, but they can adopt temporary regulations, they can't last more than six months, you've probably heard that they can do a moratorium, there's a reason there's a six month deadline, because they can do what they need to do or they think they need to do, but if it didn't come up to them through the planning, planning commission, it can only last for six months. Then they have to go back and do it again, hopefully they send it to you in the meantime. So if they ever decide to do a moratorium without your input, they'll adopt the moratorium, then they'll send it to you and have you study it for six months and send it back to them so they can decide whether they want to make a permanent change or not. All right, if you got more than half the questions right, you get to go home at the end of this meeting. And if you didn't get more than half the questions right, you still get to go home at the end of this meeting, we'll talk again in two weeks or four weeks, thank you.
I just want to add to your, you know, example with the moratorium. Um, that doesn't mean there's no work going on, if they, you know, they say no, we're gonna put a moratorium on townhouses built along this area until we get some more things in place, or we adopt policies, or whatever it is, but during that six months, there usually should be a lot of work going on. So you don't have to extend that.
When there is a temporary land use regulation, you are exactly correct. The purpose of that temporary regulation is to figure out what the problem is and to address the problem within those six months, you're absolutely right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Colin. All right, uh, upcoming agenda items.
All right, so a lot of the same, uh, that we've had, so let's see, we've got uh, so we've got that, that building that I mentioned to the east, uh, of the commercial property we were talking about today, I'm still working on that, I talked to the applicant last week and just waiting on some revised plans. Um, we, let's see. I, I mentioned, uh, there was a site plan on, on five hundred west down by twenty seven hundred for, uh, uh, it's a preschool. I talked to the applicant about that last week, that may be on hold, they're trying to decide what they want to do, um, so that's, that's not gonna be quite as pressing, we might see that in a while, we might not see it. See, we have a subdivision application for the property, we, we just did the Westlake Landing subdivision, I'll show you on the map here. Um, so we just did the commercial property here. Um, recently, there's also a property owned down here, uh, this zoned residential and we received a residential application for that, so we'll be looking at that one soon. Um. See, we also have, uh, phase four of the Sadie's Glen Project. So just a continuation of the townhomes and, and single family, uh, fifty five plus community over here. Um, and then see, we also have an application for a subdivision plat down here, did a rezone on this a few months ago and they're looking at potentially just, uh, building a cul-de-sac, um, so we'll see what happens with that one in terms of whether it goes through or whether it's a cul-de-sac, but they've proposed a single family housing in there, that's.
Just stay on that picture for a minute, because it just brings up a a question, because we're, I think one of our jobs should be to try to prevent these little islands from existing in the middle of a so this access to this piece of property, where will it come from?
So it currently kind of sits between these two stubs here, and this, this property is not owned by them, so they, they can't go through without these properties developing. But yeah, they do have a stub there, um, but you are correct, yeah, we want to try and prevent landlocked parcels like that, so with this one, yeah, the big question is whether or not it's, it's going to be required to punch through, or whether they can just put in a cul-de-sac and then these guys would do a cul-de-sac, um, so we'll see what we end up with.
Hey. Thanks. Hey, thanks. That's a great picture. Thanks.
Yeah, based on, based on timing of some of the houses built out there that was quite a while ago.
Right, yep. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
All right, commissioner reports. All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
It's been entertaining. Just do that question before we have an answer. Uh, but if here's the reports, what do we look at there? Are there going to be times where you spend your time something?
You're going to be gone in, in a future. I just have to mention that. If you are, you know, you went to training or something, I'm not, and took away some, you wanted to share with everybody once. That'd be a good time.
Or basically yeah, generic, anything like it's just a joke. Thing to say. So our chairman, chairman, he was on the on the many four of this day of school. I'm talking about like so yeah, kind of a little bit there and he would, he would kind of share that. That would be okay. So like I said, you want to say, hey, how hot is that pin outside? That'd be a good time to do that. General city.
The same, the same thing that public comment, public comment section. It's kind of hard checks to finish.
It doesn't necessarily
Generally, it's like for anything that happens. Because our discussion was
For a while.
I just said, I don't
Not half. It, it can, it can be thirty.
Right. That's why we have also we have you don't have
Every time.
And if we get a so it's not table, it's just it does. If it, it gets a negative I believe that's the game. So it's a default to the if we don't have a general consensus, let us help them. Thank you. Make sure that train goes.
If somebody doesn't do something for six months and five hundred dollars.
We're never going to do that.
That's why I said it said it at a reasonable cap. I said three thousand.
That seems to be
Well, there is that clause that says that each day we consider separate events and the last one will stack up. I wouldn't mind if if we said yeah. You know, uh, because in all reality, a lot of times we just charge them for the first event and stuff then.